In question, sir.
Guys.
Adam.
Adam, how are you? Good. Second guest. Seven?
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Hello.
To you. Section six, action nine, uh, six point one, approve the bus stops for twenty-four, twenty-five. Can I get a motion?
Sure.
Second.
So this recommendation is to involve the bus routes for the other twenty school year replay. Thanks to Congress and his team, all of our junior routes for sure, and also the timely manner to stay on what's important.
You should have them this early. This is good stuff.
And his teams worked really hard and they can work on some of the side that we have or to review it prior to the actual start of the routes. Also, just making sure they understand how important this rest of the meeting. Actually.
Yes.
Second, yes.
And here, but I was just pointing to for the specialized education of Ohio service agreement, twenty-four, twenty-five. Appreciate the motion.
Hello.
Okay.
So this agreement relaxed by the application related services from our students require those services. We have used this on the past as well last two years. It definitely has got one piece of it.
I, um, the ones?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Seven, yes.
Um, six point three, for the non-union classified supplemental pages. Can I motion?
Sure.
Second.
Straight up.
So this just, um, brings the classified something down to the same increase of consistency in cost ones to gather.
Question for comments. Okay.
Yes.
Seven. Yes. Williams?
Yes.
Back in time, yes, surprise.
Yes.
I'm saying one four, for the interim treasurer contracts. I can motion. On the move.
Second.
So I, please. Or any, or hiring separate, sorry, no, this is just not like that.
I appreciate this is head of the staff now. She's well versed in the roles of treasurer, that be kind of been a form of pressure, but yes. These things come along.
Right. Guys.
Yes.
Second, yes. Williams?
Yes.
Is this?
Uh, yes.
Back in time.
Yes. They're here in Germany, so comments, you're on my seat. It's fine, sir.
I am so glad to show you here.
Challenge.
All right, six point five, approve the K two business consulting treasurer search agreement. I get a motion.
We'll move it.
So approving this recommendation, uh, designates A twelve as the search movement, treasure movement, or they could also outline still.
All right, we know those K two are seeing, uh, these with us, so. What he has questions that can find or wait itself. Or do you present a view, need to add your, uh?
Yeah. Right. One. I'm one week.
Yeah, okay. So against the general later, it's. Which inherently is in seven, nine hundred dollars, then there's some additional optional services for you to purchase the D. Definitely. All right.
Do you want me to go split to you before you're?
No, I agree. I like your instance. Yes.
Back in time, yes. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Surprise, this is second, yes.
All right. Six point six. Approve the rental service contract, uh, with N C O S E for twenty-four, twenty-five. Motion.
So.
All right.
This continues the natural great collaboration, uh, of the S E residential space.
This something's, you did this last year as well, yes.
For the last two years for sure, we've done this. Right. In the basis of the last five.
They could use a station of, um.
It's for the counties, they provide county student services, they're agriback county student services, yes, so there's, um. I believe in the size right now of which it does have two and then the other three spaces are different. You know, it's like you mentioned, these are services that just allows them to use. That can't probably reduce the two spaces, they're just the one, two classes, just the one being used, I don't need those two spaces. Um, down upon, uh. If we ever leave that space, we're going to get it in the air, correct? I hope that's right. Then we also would need to allow this, 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 this. Quite. That.
There, uh, to, I don't understand more discussion, so I think start with the treasure search information. So I, yeah, we can come over now, but she's in the podium here, not chasing.
Here.
Communication is really good, and so what I have here is the name of board members, superintendent treasure. And what I understand to be your email address, if you could put your cell phone down here. I, I don't communicate via cell phone, but what I do is I will text you and tell you that I have emailed you something. That way you don't look for it, it helps with communication, so if you could just check your email address. And if you could put your cell phone down and phone that would be wonderful. Okay, so one of the first things we really want to discuss, and that is on the contract, there were a couple of options. And that was the green room and the onsite profile. Uh, onsite profile, I will tell you that I really have found that that isn't as much of. When I have added for the majority of the places that I have done a search for, I have done tons of searches. And for the profile, we will send out a questionnaire, uh, to those that you want typically it is the treasurer's staff. Uh, the administrators. If you have some, uh, your union reps, which will value their employment, some of the secretaries at work specifically with the treasurer. So we will send out a survey to them. The only option is to actually do that on site. What I've found is when I do it on site, people are a little more hesitant to really respond and give me their thoughts. I get a lot better response when we email that question survey, and why we should doesn't ask the superintendent to send it out. Because they don't know the rest framework, they know the superintendent, they're much more likely to respond, but they respond to me. And so their responses are confidential, they come to me, I do the analysis of it, I provide report profile report to you. In that profile, it also helps not just what folks are looking for in the treasure, but they also, when they see as the advantages of different city schools. When they see as challenges, and that's really helpful way to recruiting. So that the folks know what, what's the challenge that I'm going to face if I come in as a treasurer? And what are the advantages, what's really good about somebody? And so besides just looking for what they want in a treasurer. Those things that they have in mind, just they don't really die, I will provide a report to the board. And then we use that for our recruiting tool too, and you will also use that to go back to when we start to evaluate candidates. Are the candidates, we looking at, are they meeting what it was you said you were looking for? So we use the profile report for a lot, and we'll send that to the board. Now, while I ask for your approval, it's not a very good approval, I just want you to know that this is what we can. This is what we're going to be utilizing, so that you have had the opportunity to see it before it goes out. So that's one of the options is the onsite, but again, I don't see really the value out of it. I've had some districts that I wanted to, for particular reasons, they felt that base was valuable. But I don't feel again, I have best responses then when they understand it just to me. The other option is the green room. The green room is the ability for others in the district to feel are valuable, that you want their input. For a final round candidates, we don't, that for the initial candidates, only for the final round candidates. It's before they meet with the board, so the candidate would go and meet with green room. It is more of a conversational, is to get to know the candidate, not necessarily willing to interview them. Yeah, they want to know what their experience, all of this, how we interact with them, to really get to know the candidates. And then we have a survey form that we ask for each of the participants in the green room to provide feedback and provide that feedback to the board. Again, this is really dependent on my board district and what it is that you're looking for, there are some candidates. Either you've got a green room that really, really likes this candidate, and you see something totally different in the air. And so if you really want to have that understanding of your room, when we prep the ready room, that your input is valued. The board wants to see what you have seen, ultimately the board is the one who has to make a decision, and they may see other things that you value. So that's the piece, it's up to you, but if you would like to have that gray room included in. It's not something you have to decide tonight, it is something as we go through the candidates, you can decide, yeah, well, we're going to do this, this guy, what is important is something, so we can add that up. Just so you know where to look from. So one of the things I need, I need to know who the spokesperson is for the board, I've been working with this clients. And I apologize, I do not have, it's okay, this is your first chance, you're firmly excuse your surveys. So. And then, um, talking with Dustin, so I'm assuming that you would have to tell me exactly the person that I would be reaching out to. Same figures pointed. Oh, I'm told, yep. Somebody told me I just did that the other day, and now I'm told me to do this. So I have already sent, um, the, started the brochure already, I have sent some of the information to Jenny to provide some of the data pieces of it. And I've also sent some things to Jerry to look at, factor district, um, so what is it that you would like to see in the brochure? To draw some a candidate in. What's, what is about specific that you would want to know, I had started the process, started some of that pieces of it. And then asked for if you would review that, again, the brochure will come to the board so that you can look at it and say, yeah, this is it. Or hey, you know, I think we would like to include this, maybe not this, or a question about it before we, from the, the brochure. So when I talk about the profile questionnaire, I kind of, I'm not told, you're superintendent. But that is something I would like for you to tell me, if that, who you would like for me to send the, I could send an email. With something in there with the profile attachment, and this is typically what we might put in the email, so. It's definitely what you would like for me to pass to send the profile up. And based on the calendar that you come up with, is when I will send that to you. And I do, I ask you, when are your administrators back on the buildings, are they back now, most of them? And so I always want to make sure that once the calendar is set, that the person that usually sends out your meeting notices also has that calendar. So who typically is the treasurer, is the superintendent, secretary, superintendent sends out the meeting notice. Who, who would want to make sure, do I send it to?
Kelly's far.
What was that? So one of the few things I do always ask, just to kind of think about is during the interviews. And that is the mood refreshments, uh, depending on how long the night goes. Depending on the number of candidates, whether we have one night of interviews or two nights, how long a night goes, just something which you might want to think about. Uh, because it can get very long, we want to make sure that you're as attentive for the last candidate as you are for the first one. Uh, also, the only thing we should ask is that you have some water for the candidates, so I ask that you do that. So let me talk about the calendar. So I have, I put this together with a very short timeline, this is anticipating a November one start date for the treasurer. I always say that you should give at least four weeks for the time, the time that you have hired someone. To the time that they would start to give a respectful, um, exit from the district that they're in. So I never ask to go in the last four weeks because you want, you mean want somebody to leave you with love. So that's based on this, so we can look at the calendar, is this what you're looking at? This actually looks as, we would be sending out that profile, the smear tomorrow, asking for that on Friday. So I could have it to you, so you could have taken a look at it, and actually posting and having a date wide announcement for this on Tuesday. The thirteenth. And I will say, tell you that the reason we choose the date, the Tuesday, is that the OASBO job board, which is the state professional association through your treasures. It's posted, it's emailed out on Tuesday, and also Tuesday is the highest open rate of emails from the metrics that OASBO does. So we know when the most people open their emails, and the job board comes out on Tuesday, now it's, it would be, could be posted before that. But actually going out to all of the OASB members would be Tuesday. So everything works, and we can accommodate that, we can always move everything back. But this was just a tentative calendar, I thought it would be an option to start the process. During the course of that time, I would develop first and final round interview questions, I would email those questions to the board. We try to use the profile and look at what you were looking for, what you said that you were looking for, and incorporate some of those things in the questions. I would have some of the questions to you guys, say, is this what you're looking for, is there a question like this, or something that you're looking for? But I have them included so that I can modify the questions, we do modify the questions to make them specific, some of them are going to be similar now. Where you see the search, no matter what district, but some of them may be very specific to your district. So we want to make sure we ask the questions that are going to get the answers that you're looking for for the candidates that you have. Same thing with the final round interview questions, for the final round, we do do, uh, into a presentation on the forecast. It would not be as your treasurer would do a forecast presentation, but it's as if they were a consultant looking at your forecast, they would say, this is what your forecast tells me. This is what I have seen, this is what my research has shown, and so it's more along those lines. Not going to be what you're typically used to for your treasurer giving a forecast presentation. So there are other questions along with that, but we want to know that they can get up on the front row. Uh, a crowd that they are understandable. I also ask them to explain mileage and OASBO two sixty four in layman's terms. I had done so many searches. And when the board would say, can you do this in layman's terms? Every single candidate said, sure, I can. I've had to sit in one night, I got I want to know. So show me, tell me, show me that you can do this, and they're explaining understandable. So we kind of incorporated that into the final round, because you want to know that they can explain the republic. Something as complex as school finance. I would go over, I will ask for a copy of your current treasurer's contract. I will go over that. I do see sometimes, uh, it was fairly new, so you shouldn't be trying those things, but there are times that I will find things that are extremely bold. And a contract, because the contract passed on and passed on last time. Um, I actually saw one not too long ago that talked about cell phone audits. And the number of cell phone audits. So we would have been, and a treasurer didn't know that they uh, were allowed tuition reimbursement. So it was something that's just passed on. So I always look at that and I ask your attorney, ask for you to have your attorney review, drag any modifications to it. And it'll be a ton of the contract. It won't have dollar amounts in it. It might have the suggested language that you can or cannot use, but I'd rather have your attorney review it. And say, yes, that language is good if you choose to use that option. So that, we're going to do all that during the course of the uh, announcement of the recruiting period. Recruiting period will be from August thirteenth through September sixth. According to them, and again, we can modify the, the schedule as needed. This was to begin the process of thinking. So the application deadline will be sixth. I would send the board a link to the K twelve website, all of the application materials, which is a letter of interest. Uh, three references, and we don't ask them for letter of references, we ask them for references and how they're connected with that reference, their contact information, their license. I have had some recently, and I'll tell you. Finish this, I'll go back to the candidate. Uh, their resume. And we have a CFO screening. When we ask them those specific questions, it gives you a lot more insight into who the candidate is and what kind of experience they have. So those are all in a packet. They are on our website for the board and superintendent to review. Uh, they'll get a password to log in and to review those, so they'll have those online materials so that you can look at it. I will bring for any, we will go down meetings, um, I have it down there for the ninth. To meet, to review the applicants and to choose who it is that you want to interview. I do know the majority of these people, I apologize, I should have mentioned that. I have been a retired treasurer, was a treasurer for thirty years. I also am the past president of the Association of OASBO. So I worked with a mentoring program. I also wrote some other professional adult curriculum. I know the people. I know who's out there. With managing the mentoring program, I know a lot of the new ones. I know those that are up and coming, those that are just joining, and those that have no experience at all. I also know those, there are some that I would have to tell you because of what I know that I would recommend. It's still up to you whether you interview them or not. But maybe I know something that I would share with you in executive session as to that there may be some issues that are behind what you want to know about. So if you have anything you want on an application, that knowing who they are, you need to have all that information before you make the decision as to who you want to interview. Again, you, you will get every single application that we receive. We do not share a credit. You will see everyone that comes in. Whether they have their license, whether they don't. Anything, you will have them, and then we'll discuss it that night, and you will tell me who it is you want to bring back for interviews. I then have down set for a candidate pool. We used to talk about having a candidate pool. Okay, a year and a half ago, I was a candidate pub. It's really more of a candidate trip. There just really are not a lot of candidates out there. Um, there are a lot, because you may mind it, have no experience. They come through the pathways program, which is a professional development program that is through OASBO. That allows them the bigger picture types of things. But they may walk into a district and have never processed a purchase order. They don't know what uh, a PO is, they've never processed any receipts. We have candidates, but board may say, you know what, I really see something in that person. And they may be candidate, you feel fits best in this district. If that's the case, I will tell you that a lot of the, the searches I have done typically work for smaller districts than what it is. But that's really, you know, could still play here. I have suggested to the board that you know which entire or retired treasurer to come in and work as a paid consultant to work them through, maybe for three days a week for the first couple of months, a couple of days a week for the second couple of months. Day a week, then maybe periodically just for your end calendar, your end specific things to give them a really good start. Because you're really going to pay for it on the front end with someone with no experience. Get them the experience they need, get them the training that they need. Or you're going to pay for it on the back end when you have to be able to miss. And I have had, I think right now I have six or seven districts that are in exactly that situation. And if the treasurer's pub, we will stay there because the board is invested in them. And the board is extremely happy with those two, doing those choices. But it is an option, and it is an option in this day and age. But I do my best to give you every single candidate that I know is available on there. I have down then the sixteenth and seventeenth as options for your first round of interviews. Now, I have two days down there, and I have the twenty third and the thirtieth for your regular board meeting, and this is a question that I have for you. The final round interviews. We want to give them at least a week to prepare for the presentation for a final round. You have a board meeting on the twenty third. I didn't know how flexible you are with adjusting your board meetings. Because you want to hire shortly after your final round interview. Because you want to make sure that you have that security in contract. Because I have, because of the candidate pub. I have had districts that have sought to keep their treasurer. And so if the board waits too long to actually hire, our board may initiate an encouragement for that person to stay. And it, and how it is. So with that, you kind of think about that thought, um, if you want to keep your twenty third for your regular board meeting, and then in that case, I would suggest a special board meeting on the twenty seventh. The higher, that gives us enough chance to finish up the contract, have you guys look at the contract, have a candidate look. Make sure there's some questions. Or if you move your regular board meeting to the thirtieth, you still have your final round on the, you know, the twenty third or the twenty fourth. And you have, so that's totally up to you. Time when we can adjust for that, if everything else on the calendar looks like something that you would work with. I put that down there as an option, rather than having another discussion.
I just shared the twenty seventh.
Should I set it this time? It'll be on the twenty sixth. Or it could be any time of the day. I don't know what your schedules are like, whether you've ever done you know, early board meetings. I have a board that could have seven AM board meeting just to hire because of the same situation as you're trying to.
And you've only got that one on the calendar, case we keep with the meeting on the third, the right one. You, you've only got the twenty seventh on there. From what I understand, that'll make case we keep the twenty third regular board practice.
Yes. Yep. And that's really, I said, it doesn't have to be the twenty seventh, it can be the twenty sixth. Still, one day is fine. But it's easier if I give you dates and you tell me what might not work than asking you what does work.
The, the Monday evenings do be a challenge for me. I teach on Monday evenings. So teaching one, or maybe maybe out there a month for a morning is quite a few sessions. So, yeah, having like two more Mondays out would be, would be a challenge.
So we can easily move the, the ninth. Because we're going to, you'll have your applicants in, you'll have a chance to, to review them, and moving the ninth in either a different time or to the tenth is. Well, and when she really would work because we're giving them, it's better for the first round, we review them or asking them to come in for an interview. That first second line, give them that time to, to go through. So we, that's Wednesday, yourself. We're looking at the eleven. For person.
One second.
And that, that meeting really will not take a long time. But to review the candidates, because she'll already have the information ahead of time. We'll obviously have a chance to review them. This is just making the decision as to who you want to bring in, so that it's not going to be a long. And I only put six o'clock time down there because I saw that your regular board meetings were six to five. I was just assuming that there was a purpose for that. Then earlier time works. That's fine, I'm only hurting this way. So this time for the review of the candidates. At six thirty, I'm not so review, we'll do this. And then we not, we need to not do the sixteenth, correct?
Right.
So with the seventeenth and eighteenth work then for interviews, if we need two nights. And that one, the earlier you start with better, because that's the timeframe of the interviews, we usually leave about four, for interviewing. The line key for probably having, we do know that final round of that. Because we want to have them time.
So if we can we move on? Well, so we've moved the right one, the twenty third, the third.
Holy day, this is my life, this is true. Thursday is pitch. Otherwise, I'm really very vague of something.
Uh, that would be the, really is on part, at least we're on pretty good disk right now. If we get the first round.
What I'm trying to do is point to two months, I guess, or well, we don't need to, it says that Thursday. Sixteenth of classes. So we can use the sixteenth and seventeenth.
Okay, so we're going to do the tenth, the sixteenth, and the seventeenth, and if we only need one night, we'll choose the seventeenth. Okay, and then we're going to, uh, we'll do the final round interviews on the twenty fourth. And the regular board meeting on the twenty sixth to hire. All right, you have class twenty four.
I have the tenth and seventeenth.
Five classes. So what we're having the, I'll have three o'clock, four thirty.
Great, I'm ready.
We choose the twenty fourth. At three o'clock.
Okay. So, and I will redo the calendar and send it to all of you, just to make sure. These would want to be able to look at these on the, uh, on the brochure all the way to the pieces that they are tentative. So, but people like, are applying, they want to know their, as well, they don't have as much of talent in September as we do like in June or July. Uh, sometimes they really, they might, uh, usually, so they want to watch that. So at this point, I have the reviewing candidates at six thirty on the tenth. We're going to tend to leave the sixteenth and seventeenth for the initial round interviews. We're going to do the twenty fourth at three o'clock for the final round interviews. Now, that one will like, is a little bit longer depending on the number of candidates that's around the side of your brain and offer. We will actually offer the contract that night. I will have a contract to sign that. I, I will actually give you a spreadsheet. I'll have your current treasurer and all the benefits in one column. I will have each of the candidates that you're doing final, have all their benefits, so you can see them side by side. And then I call them to an offer. When you've chosen your candidate, I will leave the room, I will make a phone call for the candidates to know that we are going to offer a contract that night, and they should be prepared. So by that time that night, by night, you will have somebody in the side desk.
One night.
I'll do the event, yes. Okay. I will do a new calendar, I'll send it to all of you.
The move for it, why actually, of course, it's.
And I will send you both a calendar list in a linear timeline, with, I know some people, it works better in a linear timeline, and somewhat better with the calendar, so I'll send over who's sweet. This is what a tentative start date of November first. And then if there's, depending on who it is, whether there's a transition time, how that might work for you. And sometimes it works better depending on what experience and where that person is coming from, for them to start, and then maybe do a transition after that, if they're volunt, totally. But that really does, can work better because it's, it's, yeah, it works, works out for. So one, one of the things we will need for a brochure, we can, now, we'll get a brochure as soon as we can get that, gather the information about the data, and then also find the, do use to say sour range. Or candidate, because we do put that in the brochure. So that's all what's the reason. If I do know I was. So looking at you currently. How and what is in the area. And if you want to be able to, you don't want to, you don't wanna go too high on the low. Because you may have somebody come in that that is inexperienced. Because what you post, you said this is where our range is. Also, if you come in and somebody you said, hey, well, um, hundred fifteen is our low end, but we're on three ninety. That might be able to help to get past because they come their movement anticipation. Also, I'm gonna see if the screening over in Rasples, if they're anticipated salary range. How close to that, you might, he knows they have no experience with beginning, you're going to hear somebody then, you know, a little bit, but you know, you're advertising that this is where they're at. And I will tell you, one fifteen probably for the size of this group is low. And you know, I mean, yeah, for your hash and also when to market. It's extremely difficult. It's that I am, we typically do at least a twenty thousand dollar range. Because you might have somebody that has experience. I've spoken with, I've already uh, sent out favors for about five of those. One has a lot of experience, wants to get closer to home. Uh, has been treasurer for a very long time. Still has a lot of years that she still wants to work, but also wants to get closer to home for those years. Uh, somebody else that has, you know, a different level of experience. So you're might have a wide range of experience lots to be new. So it's the time and that you need to really determine. The one piece that I don't have is now, do I have to ask? Because I saw on your website that uh, you're listed as an interim superintendent?
No, no, that's impossible.
Oh, I have to say and check the website because I always find interesting things on the website. But I found that was the case, but. So the only thing I don't have is the superintendent's current salary. So we have to be also cognizant of where that is. Uh, and I can send you some data. I wasn't sure where we're going to get this one. I sent the uh, the information. My guidance something that we're willing to have discussion and know where our top end is between. So we can have all range in the brochure. So we are okay with the with the timeline. I will send you the profile questionnaire as it came out tomorrow. What I need to know from you is who do you want the profile to go to? I will, I would suggest obviously first of all, your few principals and administrators and your treasure staff. Are there others besides that and your directors on your service, director of transportation? And those are the folks that are going to be working with the the treasurer. Are there others besides the that you would like to go up to? Sorry.
I was having a profile.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize. Yes, because to avoid. I send it to the I send it to the board and I'll try it.
Right.
Yes, I will send it to the board and then I asked the the superintendent sent it to me of my budget was yes. Those are the assumptions that I made. Okay, so we have the board have sent to uh, and let's do this and also write to your input as well. So I send it to you and I ask for your your response back as well. The uh, treasure staff. Your admin, directors, your union reps. And then are there central office secretaries that you want to direct with the board a lot of the treasures? Is there anybody else that you've that you feel that is going to have, with somebody that you know they're really working with treasure, they're going to know some of those things. Is there anybody else that besides those that are where you're the most the most? Okay, I will send the email to you tonight first thing in the morning so that you have it sent out with a copy of the profile. It is in PDF form, we write all PDFs, so it's easy to evaluate this time. And then we asked that they just gave me an email back to me about an email in there, please. So the one thing that I can't have you do yet is the to review the brochure, but I will send that to you uh, as soon as I get the information. I'll send that to you through your input month by as soon as possible because we do want to be able to uh, post that. We've got the majority of of this week to be able to get that in and back so that I can get it to us. But I will notify them that we're going to be posting it so that they know that they need to put it on the job. I have just a couple of questions. These were questions that I've had for a long time. So obviously things, do you want experience only? Maybe say probably going to want the broad range and then make your decision. Okay, I'm seeing the odds. Um, are you okay with retire, rehire? That would not be a retire, rehire for you with somebody that might have retired from another district that you wouldn't be hiring, but they are in a retired status. So it's not like you would have to do as you did tonight if they're not retiring. That's okay, girl, it's bad. So I will tell you also, is there someone that you would want to have posting on your webpage? There's somebody to send that to. Would you be posting it on your website? Make sure that they heard about the public brochure so that she can uh, post that as well.
I have a quick question for you. You mentioned you referred to people that have passed the pathways that have done that long experience.
Yes, those that have gone through the pathways program are licensed. I have had a few folks that have been really close, that they're in that final process. Um, and that they have applied as well. And then it's up to the board whether you want to. Do you have or not? Contact some boards that have interviewed some folks that are inmates that age. But it's a little bit touchy because if they're not gonna have their license before you're ready to do final interviews, you don't know if they're going to have their license. But if they're at that point where they. Uh, if if you don't know unless they are at the point where they have submitted their application and all they're doing is waiting for, or they have all their information and they're just submitting it. Then that's a different story. But if they're still in the process, uh, I I did Marion City actually uh, interviewed someone and she was in her process. And they really, really liked her, but she wasn't quite there and they really couldn't determine if she was making it. So. And the pathways program, there is a capstone project at the end. And so if they haven't completed the capstone project, they don't know if they'll even pass, you know, the pathways program. So we will be advertising on the K twelve business website. Uh, we also advertise on Lapsa, Loenzl. Uh, we also have our Twitter and our Facebook page that goes out on those. Uh, OSBA does offer the option to advertise. It's two hundred dollars. And I'm saying that I don't know of any treasurer or treasurer candidate that goes to OSBA at plus. It's up to you. If you want to spend an extra two hundred dollars to advertise there, uh, it's not something that we do through ours. It is something that you would make your decision on. I would say I don't know of any treasurer that goes to OSBA to look for a treasurer's job. Uh, it is an option. So if I ask, are there any internal candidates? Is there anyone that has their license internally that you feel would be an internal candidate? Did you know?
Is there anybody who has their license?
Also, we'll send you for the interviews, a uh, do's and don'ts of interview questions. Uh, to remind you of the things that you can and cannot pass. Um, I actually had a superintendent laugh at me one time because I told her they never could pass for somebody whose baby and. And he actually said, I'm laughing because he thought it's ever gonna do that. During the interviews, he came over and he says, I got it. I was trying to basically when we're interviewing and one of my people said that question. So we wanna make sure that you have those interview questions that you cannot cannot ask and ensure that that's. We do do a somewhat of a background check on all of the applicants. It is not a fingerprint background check. Uh, I look at their Facebook page. I look at their Twitter. I look at their LinkedIn. Uh, I do searches, Google searches for that. I will check if they're treasurer. I check their audits. I check their buyer forecast. And so I check all of those things so that I can provide that information to you when we review the candidates. If I see something out there that you should know. And I do a Google search. If I see something pop up, uh, and I said same to you on Facebook pages. Uh, if you now wanna know if there's something out there that you should be aware of, that you feel might be detrimental.
License from the state of Ohio. They have mom through up here right back, right in Eastside.
Yeah, I also by between the first and final round interviews, uh, we ask that the board, when a superintendent uh, do reference checks. And the reason I say superintendent is there are, if they are sitting treasurer, we want superintendent to contact the superintendent, find out. There's some other references. We ask that you also do that with the final round candidates and how do that both provide to a strict, you're welcome to use a strict, you're welcome to not. Uh, but it does help if some people aren't as comfortable with that and who you have in your reference check. So like, obviously we'll discuss that uh, after the first round interviews and you can decide who wants to make those calls. Hey, I think that's everything that I have. We've got the dates. The only thing that we really need to decide on is the upper end of your salary range. Are you okay with starting at one fifty?
Yes, sir.
One ten, I hear Austin. Luckily, considerably. Uh, if you're going one ten every year, if you feel comfortable with that. Because that's not that you can choose something, someone from the line, uh, especially if they have no experience. But the upper end, if you know all the upper end, it will deter those who come. So you know, if you're well, with one ten, because you know, that's where you're gonna start. You don't have any experience. They don't see a problem with going to one ten, that upper level that you really want to be concerned. And we don't want to ensure good candidates from coming in.
One fifty. We're doing a range.
National, that's an answer.
Salary, I'll just with you, you know, serve the same function. So if we end up with a treasurer who's got a lot of experience, we need to pay them more than you to get them here. I'm gonna do that. So. I don't, if one fifty is the upper end, if you find someone deserves one fifty. And they want you. So be it. All right.
I'm gonna tell you, I I had one fifty as my suggested. I really needed to know where where I was coming from.
I was gonna say, this doesn't allow us to, that those are a lot of candidates, right? Right, that's what I'm reading. Like, I'm not worried about saying it was a monster.
Yeah, and I I can tell you that I had a very small district that's not too far north of here. And uh, they drew from Columbus Public. Columbus Public, he told me they have like twenty five uh, licensed treasures in the Columbus Public. Uh, and you know, they're not being, they're not a treasurer. Uh, and we pulled from that, it's supposed to where he wanted to be. And the board really had to push to get to, you know, where he even wanted to be worth his file to come be a treasurer. But he wanted a new treasurer, and so we were to shape the contract that gets used for. So if you guys are okay with having these, that's a really viable range. And I think and we'll work on getting the best candidates. And again, it's just a non-bonquet. It's based on their experience. Put those numbers in, we'll put the data in and information. We'll send the brochure to you as soon as I have all that information just for you to review it. See if there's any changes or any additions that you would like uh, to have in the brochure and we will get that posted um, on the thirteenth. And let's just start it. And I'm already working with you. Uh, we do have one other person that will be working with me, Sue Lehman. She was the treasurer's retired treasurer from foster area for the schools. And Sue will be here during the interview nights. We ask, we always agree to promote candidates for late men because. When somebody gets here, they're already nervous. I'll make sure they know where they're going. We give them the exact location of the door, when they come in. We meet them, we sit and talk with them to allow them a little bit of time to settle in and to calm the nerves so that they can have the best interview possible. She'll be here for both the first and final round interviews. And if she was to go with the green room, then she would be handling the green room. So we have somebody in there to help with that.
I do have one question that probably should have been asked before you started counting. My concern is the timing of this. I was wanting to get viable candidates at the start of the school year.
Yes.
Treasurer position different than superintendent.
It it really is. But that is one of the reasons why I said if you want to give up these two four weeks to get a respectable exit um, the the position there. I think I, all of the searches that I have done, and I have done, only have one district that was presentant. Um, and was did not want to allow the treasurer to. Other than that, you you want your treasurer, you have, you want your treasurer to do the best job for you. And so it's that they're, yes, they have a contract. And can you hold them to the contract? Absolutely. Do you want to hold them to the contract if they have an opportunity to leave someplace else? If there's a reason that they're leaving them, and you're not going to match, I said, I I had districts that if you matched, increase, they encouraged people to stay. That they really wanna go. Really want them to stay.
And watch people be at, but I think. Finding the treasures will be very difficult. I'll make sure time is the top.
No, that's, yeah, that is not, we've not found it to be a problem. So have any further questions? You will be getting text messages from me, emails from me. Uh, it does come from my K twelve email. I do find occasionally one of the reasons that I text, please do not respond to all of the texts. You wanna respond to me and say you've got it. Fine, please do not reply to all of the texting. I'm treasurer, I'll hold them to it.
I think what it's saying is don't afford me a right to turn.
I was never worried you might be in for a text. Yes, exactly. Also, a board may be a treasurer, yes, that's exactly what I'm saying. And I will, I will text you, just so you know, that things have come, so that you have, you know, you can respond if you want, okay, when I all have busy lives.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
While we're on that topic, I'd like to know what you would like in the adjournments. Whatever you decide is fine. And give it.
On the. Uh, this question, good, for the candidate review, and the first round interviews, a lot of industries, we were asked for their current treasurer, and since Jenny will look this, look whether she's, you know, been here or not, she is, she does know the votes. And so it is totally up to you, you guys can think about it, right, final round interviews, I typically do not ask the sitting treasures being there, first of all, they're reviewing the forecasts, but first, they have stuff. And it does make them uncomfortable, and you don't want them to be uncomfortable, just because they're, they're not sure of how it can actually go, but I, I can remember, right, especially the candidate review, because Jenny may know something. But, you know, Jenny knows because she's worked with them in some other fashion, uh, first rounds, that's up to you guys, um, you know, sometimes it's unofficial to hear another ear, I will tell you the other questions. Uh, Jerry will not have questions specifically that he's going to be asking, that ask that the superintendent absolutely be there, because that's a team, but the superintendent. Really, the task is to watch for those non-robles, that you guys may not pick up on, because you're focused on the question and the answer that they're giving, and so Jerry's gonna see all those non-robles that you may not have seen. And see something that, uh, that would be really valuable, that you may not pick up on, because you're focused on the questions, is that makes sense? Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, I'll move on to question number seven here, so are there any other ones, especially to me?
I would like to comment to, uh, great back there, five was out in the park lot, looks great, um, I'm sure that you did that all yourself.
No.
No, no, looks, looks very good, uh, my other question is, I see a lot of materials down, but we track, do we know when the next steps are, are beginning?
Uh, the latest email, it'll be around tonight, tonight o'clock.
Really? Good. Good.
I don't think, I would say the season part, or executive session. Moving on to you, I, uh, thanks, executive session. Well, my, I pretend which is a German, uh, motion to a German. Okay. Yeah. Okay.
Back in the park, yes, setting, yes, plus, is there?
Yes.
Seven.
Yes.
And our next meeting will begin in regular, uh, four P, uh, twenty six, twenty twenty four, at six thirty P M, here in the Diplo School Cafeterium, thank you very much.